We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Olden Berger.
Here.
Nowar.
Here.
Max, Simon, here. Neville?
Here.
Comcast?
Here.
Rootmeister?
Here.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In addition of guests, we have a few people here. Grant, Tim's wife, Chris. Did you guys sign in to speak? I know you wanted to speak and were more than willing to. I was just gonna make sure. Just sign up before you leave on that sign-in sheet. So. Approval of the consent agenda, including minutes and terms and accounts.
Base in the whole fifteen thousand six hundred forty-two dollars. AEP two thousand nine dollars twenty cents. Ameren one thousand eight hundred fifty dollars eighty-three cents. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois four thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars sixty cents. Casey's General Store one thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars twenty-eight cents. IMB four thousand four hundred twelve dollars seventy-seven cents. Rush Truck Centers two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars thirty-three cents. Williams Stewart eight hundred. Tyler Technology two thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars fifty-six cents.
There's, I know number thirteen for the work at Crager Park. I don't see a grant. What is that?
So, the Athletic Association applied for a grant, and I have that right here. They were approved in the amount of three thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. The bill actually came out three hundred and forty-two dollars and eight cents more. In the lease agreement that we signed with them, the city puts up, I think it was five hundred dollars a year for helping them with repairs. So instead of coming out of the business district fund, that'll come out of the general fund. Okay. If you guys get a chance to go down there, they put up new fascia, new gutters. He covered the holes in the bathroom, in the men's bathroom. Power washing bathrooms, painted the floors of the bathroom. I thought they were gonna work on the rip, but I don't think they were gonna rip. And then the second bill was for... Oh yeah, they covered the holes in the bathroom and attached channels and slithers. So that was just overrun from the grant, so. Any other questions on the claims and accounts? Questions on the minutes? If not, we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
How'd make that motion, Dave?
Motion by Joyce. Second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion passes. Onto public comments. It looks like on the agenda here, we have Belinda Scott and Chris Walsh about West DeKalb Commercial Property Zone. Four years.
I have some copies. I only have six copies.
That's okay.
A piece of property on West DeKalb Street. And currently, it is five point five three acres in total. And it is currently all residential. And what we are looking at, or asking for the zoning portion is, of that five point five three acres, we are looking at keeping about one point five three acres of it residential. And we are wanting to actually turn four of the acres into commercial property. As right now, like I said, it's all residential. At this point, you know, with turning into commercial, you know, we are wanting to have the business in that commercial area back there. At this point, I mean, it's for sale right now. And the reason we are looking at the zoning portion of it is, if we are not able to change the zoning over to commercial, then we will not, you know, buy this property since it's for sale. So we are looking at seeing if we are able to zone this commercial, the four point... There's the four acres of it commercial.
What business would you be looking at?
We are looking at storage units on that four acres. But in addition to, we are looking at like a Morton building. And then, in addition to the storage, we're looking at maybe some excavating and whatever else we're gonna be involved with. So it's kind of a multi, you know, what we're looking at with the Morton building and all the storage units.
Is there a reason you chose this property, other than it just being available?
Well, with it being available right now, and it's on the outskirts right there of the city. And, you know, there's some trees back there and everything. We're looking at, you know, this would probably be a really good area. It's somewhat, I mean, flat versus right up on a hill and everything. I mean, it kind of slopes down a little bit from where it's here. For the most part, pretty flat back there.
Have you looked at any other properties in town?
I haven't really seen any that is around town for the acreage. I mean, there's some out in the country and stuff like that, but nothing that is really, you know, for sale with the acreage there.
Plus with, plus with it being the availability of having our house, basically a commercial property would be right behind our house.
Right. So we're looking at that one point five three acres. Of course, building a house there too, in that residential area.
Kind of finish the string houses in the line there, with the last one in the line.
I believe the typical zoning process is to go to the zoning board first, let them make the recommendation, and then the council decides on it.
Yes. Tim, you're on the zoning board. Can you explain, you know, exactly how it's done? I don't, I haven't had all the experience. I think it's only been once since I've been on the board where we would have had a zoning request.
My understanding is, and it's kind of limited since the zoning board hasn't had too many hearings, is that they'll submit a formal proposal to the board. And once that proposal's received, the zoning board chairman, Lauren Holmes, will call a hearing to, you know, vet and discuss the proposal. Or we'll come up with a decision, yea or nay, on that. And at which time, if the petitioner disagrees, they can appeal to the city council at that stage. So, in a nutshell, that's my understanding.
Would any such change have to be approved by the city council?
That's not my, my understanding is the zoning board decision is final unless they wish to file an appeal with the city council.
Okay. I don't know for a fact, but my understanding was otherwise, that they would make the recommendation, or at least the last time that we had the property thing, my understanding was that they would make the recommendation, and the council would most likely go with the recommendation, but ultimately have the ability to.
My reading of the ordinances is that the zoning board, Board of Appeals, makes a decision, and if that decision is wished to be disagreed with, it comes to the city council for a further hearing. But again, you know, we're just talking off the top of our heads without reading it thoroughly, the ordinances and whatnot. I don't know if Jordan has any other comment to how that's typically handled.
Not right now.
Okay.
So, do you have any questions on the process forward, it sounds like?
Our, our main thing right now, I mean, it's, of course, the property's for sale. And I don't know, with trying to put any kind of offer, I mean, I don't know how long the process would go with going through zoning, when they would meet in the decision or coming to, I don't know, whatever the process is of going through them or going through you guys. How long this process that we're looking at, you know, if we're looking at a couple?
I would say a month and a half is probably feasible.
We know, we know that that particular property, the five point five three acres, has been on the market for several years, like six, seven years, eight years. And, you know, the benefits of us doing what we want to do is, not only are we gonna add another new home to, you know, to the string, to the string houses there on DeKalb Street, that we would have the business behind there. And, and that would be in the four acres, which would be pretty much just like the Redbird, Redbird Storage on the south end of town. And we would have some storage on the north end of town. Basically, it would be, you know, a quiet business. It's not gonna be obnoxious or causing any kind of a neighborhood disturbance. And, you know, like I said, one of the benefits would be having our home right there, where you could, you know, watch the business and rely on it. And, you know, of course, another storage unit or whatever. You can always, more storage units, and it brings in revenue to the, to the city. And, you know, taxes on the house, so.
As far as getting rezoned, you have, they would have to own it, right? Or at least be in?
I think that we can rezonate it at any time.
We, we pretty much talked with the bank, and, and, you know, we can buy the whole five point three acres, and they can do the four acres commercial. And we pretty much got the approval. They just need something in writing for, for the loan process. And that we, you know, at that time, we can split residential and go with an LLC commercial loan to do, because initially, we're gonna, or we want to get the storage units up and running and get us making business, you know, making money on the business. So, and, you know, initially, I think we figured that we would put a string of forty in, and then if that, you know, if they all ran out, we're gonna put another string in, a couple strings back there. And then we'd have the, you know, the area gravelled, and then the access would be from the, from the west. Put a culvert in there by, I think we'll say, what the third, basically the third telephone pole out to access the, the storage area. So there would be a long gravel road going back to it. And then there would be the white rock all the way around the storage unit.
Something, I don't know where this later in the process, but I know when, when we had, when we started GM, it was a question about headlights and all that sort of thing. You get me out of that right away, about that. That string of houses.
Yeah.
I don't know, anything about fencing or whatever on that too?
Yeah, we were thinking about doing some-
My point is, is these people might have a problem, you know, in terms of-
No, we were thinking about doing some fencing, and, you know, we could always get the plastic and leaves in the fence or not. But we, we were actually kind of going down the road for a gated storage area with a keypad and everything like that, because obviously, the better, the better the storage area is, more people's gonna wanna. With it being, you know, it's not like it's gonna be an amusement park or anything like that. It's just gonna be a storage area, and there'll be access from the west side, with the road driving straight back there. We're gonna put the, the actual, the access road as far back as we can, which there's a tree line back there, so it would be kind of parallel with the tree line accessing back there. And then she talked about the Morton building. That would be up front on the property. And we would use that for the office space and basically storage of equipment and whatnot. It would be inside that building. So, but, you know, we were just looking at bringing in more business and then having our, basically having our residential house there, where we could have the business in the backyard.
There, there would be sales tax on that, wouldn't there, Tim? I didn't think so. And why is it that, that that wouldn't charge sales tax?
Because it's not a retail sale, a tangible personal property. It's a service sale. Just like a barber charging, you know, it's a service. There's no tax on those transactions.
Gotcha. So we get property tax on the value of the land and the buildings on it?
Yeah. And like I said, we initially are gonna start off with one string. And once we get some revenue coming in from that, put another one up there. So, you know, to initially, it's something that I'm not gonna build myself. We're just gonna contract a company to come in, put another in two weeks, if we're done. That kind of thing. So it's not gonna be like a three-year building process.
Right.
We want to start making money.
The best thing that I can say to do is, like we said earlier, the first step would be go to the zoning Board of Appeals, you know, Lauren Holmes?
Yeah.
She is the chair of that. You know how to get in contact with him, or?
I know where he lives, and Greg's been a big help here with this, so we spoke with him personally, so.
Greg, did you have any comments?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. So we'll start there, get in contact with Lauren. He will call a meeting of the Board of, of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And if you could, Kelly, put that on the agenda for the next meeting, just in case it's, it's ready to go by then.
Alrighty, thank you for your time.
Yep.
Oh, I mean, are we-
You're free to go.
Free to go?
Yeah. Nope, you don't need to stay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comments on the agenda items? Now, we'll move on to officer reports. Tony?
It's going well right now.
Smith?
Um, I have several things. I was, I received a phone call from Dan Wickline of the Village of Latham last week. What the question was, they were asking me, was if they got into a emergency situation, if we would be willing to sell them bulk water, basically to put into their water tower. I told him I wanted to run it past the council, obviously for a, for sure answer. But I told him in the interim, if that was to happen, we would do our best to accommodate them and being a good neighbor. But under the full understanding that they would have to abide by all the rules that, and regs that come with EPA to haul that water. You know, certain kinds of food grade service, pardon?
And they, they were there-
All they would do was come in here and take the water and buy the water from us.
So they haul it then?
They would have to do all the legwork. They would just be purchasing water from us. And like I told them, I said, I don't really perceive a problem there, but I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention first, before I give them the a-okay, if that's the case.
I'm totally in favor of that. We have, they use about ten percent of what we use as accounts. So our hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, their fifteen thousand gallons a day should be an issue. I think we sold more to the-
The wind farm we were selling, on average, there for a while, thirty to fifty thousand a day, and it wasn't affecting us at all.
Is anybody opposed to it? I mean, I think you can get your answer now, man.
I will let them know that-
Rice?
Ten dollars a gallon.
Ten dollars a gallon? Can we retire tomorrow?
We're here for a pleasure.
You know, it, I would like to say that we could sell it to him for the same price that we sell on the wind farm, but that seemed, that was fifteen dollars per thousand. I mean, I, I think it's a reasonable price. Andrew, do you concur with that, or?
I think it's pretty steep. If you're, if you're buying consistently water a day, I think we can do a better price.
Well, yeah, yeah, if it's that understood, yes. I think we can do considerably better on that basis.
And the fifteen dollars per thousand was for the wind farm, and we had to sit up here and babysit them and get the hoses out and do that. And I, I would hope that if Latham bought water, we wouldn't need to do that.
Okay. Uh, several other things they have. We spoke last meeting about the MFT and the crack sealing that has been done. They were here the next morning. Matter of fact, they were here when I got to work. We went all the way around the outside of the square, from the center line to the outside, like we spoke of. We went all the way down Cook Street, clear down to Park Street, both sides of the street there. And we also did about halfway down Spring Street, on where the high school's at. And we ran out of, basically funds were what we had allotted for that. I was impressed with, with how they did their job. They were here quick. They got it done quick. It turned out nice. It looks nice. I would really like to entertain thoughts of broadening the scope of that next year, and then go along with what we talked about last time, about targeting more in-need areas rather than a set area, if you follow what I'm saying. Yeah, I think if we plan accordingly, that'll be, and do that for, as we can really make some headway with that.
How long did it take to do that?
They were here, they started actually laying down seal probably about seven thirty, and they were out of here by three.
So one day?
Yes.
I would really be curious what it looked like if we rented a machine like that and were-
Good luck finding one to rent. I've been looking.
Uh, I know Chestnut offered, but he said he would be willing to rent it. And that was, I've only talked to one person so far, so he could try that. He did say that he would wanna be here when we did, pay his time accordingly. But I would think for fifteen thousand, he would probably get pretty far.
They covered a good, I mean, that's a pretty good area they covered, really, for, and especially for that kind of time.
Could you also draw up a map, any, like, it can be simple as far as like what we did, so that next time we come up, we can say we already got this done?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just any kind of doctoring?
Take it off of a city map. Is that okay, acceptable?
How high level would be plenty?
Okay.
I remember when, there was a time that Deanna, this was years ago, the council requested of you or Mike, or Deanna, or Jeff, when they were still here, as far as like the problem areas of the streets. Is that list still around? I know she went over to Holden Allen.
I'll look in her desk. Or she can go, I don't think Max has really messed with some of the paperwork and whatnot that Deanna kept in notebooks, so I will-
I believe it's hanging up on the pegboard behind her, that's... Or was that desk given?
Is that, was that for signage? I think we have one there for signs too, that we were working on. I, I will double check that.
Yes, you know, that would be, that could be a guide.
Right, understood.
When we do an extra, that way we don't have to scan the whole town again.
Right, maybe a reference point.
Right.
Yeah.
To at least know where, we know where to start, so.
Uh, the other thing I got going, obviously, is the leaves. We are, for lack of a better word, getting our tail kicked there. We're fighting the battle. They come extremely, extremely quick this year, in my opinion. Way quicker than they have in the years past. So we're drudging our way through that battle. We will start again in the morning. We're gonna go run east-west streets. We've already pretty much, of course, you can't really tell it now, but we've ran the north-south streets one time, so we're gonna focus hardcore. I think we up to about twenty-five loads or so worth of leaves we've toted out there, and you can hardly tell that we've made a dent, so.
I did have a few complaints on leaves. One said that when we do get the leaves, make sure we get them all. I'm not sure what that stemmed from.
Well, I can explain it to you a little bit. Our hose only reaches so far. And you can usually tell how far it'll reach out, because that'll be the demarcation line, right where it's at.
How close do you need on the street?
Uh, I think the rule is, what is it? They want them actually right to the edge of the, of the gutter. Not in the gutter, but at the edge of the gutter, because if they do that, and you pile it there, we can reach that.
We can, like, we can drive the truck closer though, right?
Well, this time of year, if it stays cold and freezes up, yes, that'll be a little advantageous. But if it gets soft, that thing's pretty heavy. You sink rather quickly. Especially on streets without, you know, gutters and curb, no gutter law. Yes, sir. We fought that battle before too.
Well, I don't know what that complaint was, but like, just for instance, from my house, they got picked up one time, and there's this much lead laying there. Is that, that's, and it wasn't a reach issue, it's underneath the pile that was against the oil chip part of the road. I assumed it reached that far. That maybe just a-
Might have been an oversight. I can't explain that.
I don't know how strong that thing is. I know they're wet, but-
Wet doesn't usually, wet doesn't play near as much of a role in it as you think.
Okay, just wondering.
Was the, uh, last week we had good weather, was it able to run out all four days?
I don't think we had the greatest of weather, but we were also a little short manpower wise too.
What's that about?
Pardon?
Why were we short manpower?
Max had to have some toe surgery.
Do you wanna look into, so the complaints I had, the citizens thought it would be worthwhile if we needed to hire part-time help, did you really pick up and it was worthwhile?
That will be starting in the morning.
Steve Dinger, right? He was, he did it last year, right?
Yes.
So he's familiar with the back?
Yes. Also went to the, to retain him as well as in an on-call facet for snow removal, if need be. Granted, not in a dump truck, because he doesn't have CDL license, but, you know, either in the ton truck, or most likely in the tractor doing the sidewalks. But that's gonna be an on-call thing. If we need the help, come help us. If we don't, we'll take care of it ourselves.
The leaf box is a two guy thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Drive the truck once it don't trip.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're gonna try to work a little extra harder this week anyways, right? Because Christmas on Winter Hill's coming up, so we're gonna-
We're gonna cram it as hard as we can.
As hard as you can. Like I said, if you need to stay an hour late, you know.
Yeah, the problem we're fighting, I mean, we're, we're willing to do that. But the problem you're running to now is with the time change, you lose that, you get dark pretty quick.
Right, I mean-
I mean, you're only gonna gain about an hour.
And don't come in at five AM when the sun comes up and start it, obviously.
No, people get a little grumbly on that real quick.
But, you know, if it gets dark at five-thirty, work till five, you know, whatever you think we need is done, so.
Fair enough.
Maybe run it over, do an hour, and somebody take a hurry, do an hour, and somebody run it along there, or even-
Well, you might be able to do some of that next year as well.
For Matt, did, uh, we talked before about getting the other company to check our samples this last round?
I have looked and looked, and the nearest one I found is up by Pontiac.
So we found the one in Springfield. You said they were wanting to do that?
I cannot find, no information on him, even through the EPA. I'm kinda wondering if that wasn't a fly-by-night thing. I don't know that, but-
Okay, what about the guy that came and talked to us a year and a half ago, wanting to take over our sampling?
Well, like I said, he couldn't do both. He could only do one. He could only do water. He can't do wastewater.
We said it was okay. We wanna do the wastewater. We just wanna check the samples.
That's fine. Samples this month were good, by the way.
Anything else from that? Tricia?
Um, deposits since the last meeting, eight thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. That doesn't see Comcast franchise fee and the motor fuel tax.
Is that franchise fee paid my quarterly?
Yes, I believe so.
And then, also, I, on the treasurer's report I passed out, Tim reconciled the business district account, so there should be all the activity from when it started. Other than the fact that I, we noticed the other day that the eighty-five hundred dollars that I'm pretty sure that the board approved to take out of the business district to pay for the, for the setup of the district. I'm gonna have to look back in the minutes, because I thought that we passed that to you-
No, we didn't. I thought we were gonna-
I thought we were gonna, okay. I, I gotta double check then, because we, we weren't gonna do it because our general fund was looking there in April, May. We were kinda, kinda, you know, coming up short in spots, and I thought that we decided to go ahead and use the business district fund to pay. What's that?
Maybe you're right.
I can't remember. And that's, you know, I thought, I knew that we talked about it, and I thought it came to a vote. I will look at the minutes, and if, if it is in the minutes that we approved that, then we'll get that. I will look at the minutes, and if, if it is in the minutes that we approved that, then we'll, we'll get that changed. Anything else for Tricia or finance? Okay, old business, enforcement of ordinance violation six eighty. Tony, Jordan, how, how do we begin this?
Um, let's move that to the end after executive session.
Okay.
That's my recommendation, you're in control of the agenda.
Okay.
I would recommend moving it after executive session, that's what we'll do then.
Can you at least explain what, what the six eighty is?
Six eighty was the dumping of the sewer, of the sewer fund. Okay, moving on to new business, uh, business district appropriation on, we had economic development, uh, strategic planning meeting on Saturday, and at that meeting, there was another grant approved. It was requested by the Hilltop Club, uh, Megan Neville was the one that filled it out. It is for, uh, Plasky Square, uh, for the square Christmas lights and flower pots. There was two goals that they think will hit the development plan. Um, she requested the amount of two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for this project, and it was approved by the Economic Development and Planning Board. Uh, the city council sees fit, I would like to make a, I would entertain a motion to make a business district appropriation for that amount of two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to fill this grant request. If there's any questions, here's the application, anyone would like to see it?
And that is for decorations?
Yes.
For only...
For the square, so here's the information that she got.
I think we, we, before last week, talked about that, we had voted him up.
We didn't vote on it last time.
This is a new grant.
Okay, this is through a grant though?
Yes.
Okay, the other one was just money that we were given.
So they're gonna use the flower pots that are up, and they're gonna put decorations in there, and then they're going to get LED lights for the... So there's like eighteen poles, she was, they were just planning on doing the two poles on each corner. And then, she explained it better than I could explain it, she was at the meeting on Saturday.
Yeah, so there's sixteen poles, uh, she didn't wanna purchase all the lights for all the poles. We do have some downstairs still, they are rough, and of the people that I've looked at them, they thought they were kind of outdated. So she wanted to purchase half of them this year, and then maybe half next year, and kinda not do it all at once. But it's LED, like, lights for the poles, only half of them. And then, uh, decorations for the flower pots.
It's a start and then the end too, yeah.
I will make the motion, please. Otherwise, I could send this way a couple, so.
I'll make that motion too, let that start, maybe.
Motion by Joyce, is there a second? Second by Aaron. If there's no further discussion, uh, and this is a business appropriation, may I have a roll call, please?
I'm a burger.
Yes.
Nowhere.
Yes.
Max Simon.
Yes.
Neville.
Whoopsie.
Tom Quest.
Yes.
Grant Meister.
Motion passes. Okay, it is time to approve the tax levy for two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Um, if you just, don't worry about the first eight pages, because it's just everything itemized.
Right.
You go to the last page, it has, um, the different funds and the amounts, and for the different, um, the general fund, the police fund, the liability insurance, broker's comp, um, IMRF, and social security. So there's this big formula you have to do, and this is a total that could be appropriated for us, for this. So it's just, it's kind of a formality.
We appropriate the same amount each year?
It's pretty close, um, last year we got a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I think, close to total that we got. So it's a little bit more, like I said, there's a big formula, and, so it's usually pretty close each year, it can go up a little bit. But usually not much.
Same thing we can do to the formula to make it go up?
You can levy all you want, I mean, the way I would have said, you can levy all you want, but you're still only gonna get what they see fit, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, 'cause I think last year it was a hundred and seventy-four was our total, and we got a hundred and sixty-seven, so. So we're levying up to as much as we...
Discussion on the levy?
I'll make a motion to adopt the, the levy.
Motion by Andrew, is there a second?
Second.
Aaron. There's no further discussion, roll call, please.
I'm a burger.
Yes.
Nowhere.
Yes.
Max Simon.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Tom Quest.
Yes.
Grant Meister.
Yes.
Motion passes. Electrical aggregation renewal.
Uh, I have some information on that, uh, as of today, uh, you guys should've got something in your mailboxes about, uh, current and the new quote we got. The price fluctuates, the estimate, so this is today's quote, um, we got this just today, and it's still just a little bit higher. So anything you've gotten in the past, a little bit lower, just throw in the garbage. So it's, what we got now is still cheaper, so we just have to vote on what we want.
What do we pay now?
It's the point zero four six.
What's?
And they are offering a point zero four seven.
So if we don't go with this, we'll default back to Ameren, and then what would the price be there?
I don't know that that's an option, I don't know. It's truly...
Very good.
I got an extension.
For several.
The options that I'm aware of.
So this, these, this aggregation is for the city's accounts, right? It's not for everybody in town, it's just for, like, the well fields.
Like seventeen properties, I think, yeah, right, or towns.
It's my understanding that Ameren, we only handle, they only handle... Bentley, and getting it to, replying it from separate entities.
Right.
They don't produce any flowers, so that's where I think there's a little bit, three options, buying it straight from Ameren's or whatever.
But, I, so not buying it from Ameren, but Ameren has a default, so if you don't go into aggregation, it'll, like, just like your house. You still pay Ameren and they just, they, you go to...
Does it not just go back to your last election in that process, I think?
Okay, so I'm pretty sure Ameren has a default, like, they take the cheapest of all of them at that time.
I mean, if you see on there, these are through the Ameren rate, and on Zoom.
Do you think we need more? I think that's a big piece of information that I, I would like to, if, if you're confident that this is the best option, I would, I would trust you.
Uh, well, there's always questions that we had, I guess, um, I mean, I don't, I don't know the Ameren workings or that. I mean, you can see here where it says, uh, Ameren utility, uh, there's just different, uh, whatever you call it. Companies that do, uh, um, but if we do not go with this tonight, this, this will change. Scott's market, it'll go up, it'll go down, who knows?
What is our current plan, these players?
Um, I think it's January, 'cause this one, uh, we would have to get it, pretty much vote on the ninth, if we were to go with this higher rate, to get it started in December. If not, it would be a different rate in, uh, January. The one we're with, uh, I'm not sure if that has, if we find, I'm trying to see if someone's, uh, but... I guess it's in January also, so. Let's get a little bit of motion, I don't know, what's your recommendation?
I do know that, like, a year or two ago, we had probably a half a dozen electrical aggregate people come in and talk to us, and every one of them came up with the same idea that we were giving the cheapest rate available. I don't know if that's the case today, you know, definitely we could look into that if we wanted to, but if, I mean, if we think this is gonna be the cheapest rate.
That was with the citizens, so like all the...
Oh, that's right, you're right, you are right.
And, and all the citizens go with the Ameren rate, that's why I'm curious, like, is this really better?
So you're saying this is not an Ameren rate, is what you're saying? You're saying there's an Ameren rate out there, or whatever?
Whatever their default is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how many other possibilities it would be with this type of thing.
We did spend, uh, what'd they say, two hundred and forty thousand dollars on electricity for the seventeen property last year, so. It's, uh, I don't, I'm sorry, two hundred and forty thousand.
Hey, it's around six to seven thousand a month.
So what's everybody think? Do, do you want me to look into it deeper? Yep. That means this, this rate will change, maybe it'll be cheaper, maybe we can switch, or whatever, this, uh, other Ameren thingies they can have, if we can find it.
I'm okay with it, I, I would rather have that piece of information, unless you, unless you're confident in it, so.
Well, I mean, you raise a question, that's, that's okay, so.
This is a two-year contract?
Yeah.
You think this Scott Schlescher could make it to our meeting next week, next, the next council meeting? Is there a way to get a hold of him?
Yeah.
Who is he with?
I know, but, uh...
K E C.
K E D, uh...
Yeah, 'cause the guy, I think he talked to you last time, it's the same people, but a different person taking care of that now, so. Yeah, we can, we can do it if everybody wants to do that, bring it up next meeting.
And maybe s- see if this, if he, if this guy can come, that way you can answer any questions, 'cause we don't know the answers to.
Yeah.
Which, which guy you talking about?
Well, on this one, definitely got from...
Scott?
Yeah, Scott.
Okay.
If he can, if he can make it.
So that's our existing one, right, this is who we currently have?
Yeah.
This new core is your home field interview, which is, that looks like Deborah Lucas.
Alright, that's all I do.
Thank you for the minute, Aaron, appreciate it. Be tabled for the next meeting in our old business. Is there any other business?
Uh, I have something to tell, man.
Yes, sir.
I just found today that we lost an employee.
Yes.
Um, didn't know about it, but I, I talked to the insurance guy, and if anybody's aware of any policy we have as far as coverage, does that mean when the person quits?
So we have to offer him, Apollo was talking to our guy today, um...
Yeah, I talked to him, yeah.
Okay.
He said we just have to make a decision whether it's the day of, or the end of the month.
Okay.
Or if we have an existing policy that I'm not aware of.
I, I haven't talked to him, but I was always under the assumption, I know, I know that if, you know, whether, uh, if you, if you leave, then we have to offer you something, either whether it be free, or whether it be at a percentage, or we have to just give them a policy available, the day that they pay for it.
That's the Cobra.
The Cobra, yes.
He said, either way, he's gonna have to get offered that anyway. But the policy that he's with now, the premium we pay per month, is actually up on like the fifteenth. So if it's after the fifteenth, he's covered, if it's before that, like, if it's this case, he quit on like the twelfth or something. So we just have to decide what we're gonna do with it, or we're gonna make it.
So that it would be to the end of the month?
Yeah, but if we, say we do not cover him, such as before fifteenth, we still have to make that payment, the bill's already in motion, but we would get credited for the one month, so, it's like seven hundred and dollars. If it's after the fifteenth, wouldn't matter, but this is anything like that, the premium, it's a...
Paying for thirty days, which are, what it's different? Yes.
Yeah, so the best way to be would have the policy, like, day one when they start, they have it, and they quit, that's the last day, or do we carry it to the end of the month, or that happens?
Gotcha, I see the question. I'm okay, I carry it to the end of the month, I mean...
I don't know, put it on that, it's not on agenda, but, um, he just needs to know, so he can send out that cover paperwork and stuff.
Right. I mean, if we need, I'm, I'm okay with covering it to the end of the month.
I don't know if that needs to be voted on, really.
I don't think so.
I think it's a, a matter of our policy.
Yeah, it's just a matter of policy.
Yep.
And that's where our policy will be then. Okay, thank you, Aaron.
So we're all going to the end of the month?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other business?
Uh, our December meeting, so the first meeting in December will have the second one followed on the twenty-fifth, and we'll not have one that day, right?
No.
Just making sure we're all the same age.
So we just won't have a second meeting in December?
Right.
I had planned on cooking a big meal for Christmas, I agree.
So take note of that, so that'll be a long time before we have the other council meeting, so, you know, we need to get something done before the end of the year, it needs to be done at first meeting in December, so. But it doesn't really matter, 'cause our fiscal year is not even that, anyways, so. But just take, if you're looking to get something done, you know, before the end of the year, we won't be having that second meeting. You can talk about it now if you want.
There's a letter, bud, I had a letter, uh, printed up, it's, uh, it got moved somewhere in the, moved in the process of the weekend, I will get it here as soon as I can, but I'm just, uh, we close on our house on the nineteenth next week, that would be, uh, just made an official date. So, I'll stay in, I'll just, I'll make it next week, but it's been a good experience, so, I appreciate you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate it too, Mike.
You have to get it organized.
Do we even have to extend that, what?
So last time we had the, uh, we had something similar to this, when we had a vacancy a few months before the election. The state law said we couldn't fill it until the election, like, if it's not, you know, like the year before.
Yeah, there's like a timeline, right.
So, do we fill it or do we not fill it?
I, I'll have to look into it, I, I don't know the, the timeline off the top of my head, but, um...
I planned an appointment, go ahead.
Well, I think the issue, and maybe I'm confusing issues, I thought the issue was whether or not the appointment gets, is, is subject to election or not, is that what you're talking about? Or if the appointment is...
I don't know, I would think positions up for real.
If, it, it, I think the issue is whether or not the appointment stands through the, the next election, or if, if that issue, if that position gets appointed by the mayor and, and isn't elected, and I think, I, I don't know the, the timeline, but it, it would be...
Is it a two year, or three?
Probably pretty quick.
So, so the seats, uh, the seats open in April, it's on, it'll, it will be on the ballot, whether it's blank or someone runs to his, to his position in his absence, and if it makes any difference...
What was your resignation effective?
Tim is planning on running.
I think it was on, sorry, or if it needs to be.
Okay, so the question really is, are we so close to the election that the state would prevent us from electing that seat, and you get the permanent appointment through the election?
That's what Lynn said, 'cause when Pete Hough resigned... That's what Lynn said. Because when Pete Howe resigned, that was like two months before the election, Lynn said we couldn't, or Jim couldn't appoint somebody. They'd have to go to the election. I don't, and not to me, I don't, I don't think he's gonna run, but I, uh...
Uh, that, okay. I assume the mayor would still be able to appoint anybody, it's just whether or not that appointment runs through the election. But I'll, I'll look into it and get an answer sooner rather than later.
Any other business? Is there any public comments on the non-agenda items? Any public comments at all? Uh, if there's no other comments on that, I would, uh, we do need to go to, to executive session to discuss the possible litigation. I would entertain a motion for that, please. Uh, we can talk about that if you want. Have you, uh, looked into that? Max gave us all a letter about the condition of the truck. Were you able to look into that at all, or?
I haven't found much in the way of Logan County. I have spotted two different trucks in Clinton I'm going to look at on Thursday. And we do have some funds available from when we had an insurance claim on a different truck, from a tree bong on it, helped us tremendously there.
What, what would this truck be for? I mean, what, what funds would be paying for it? Is it a water and sewer truck, or is it a street alley truck?
It'll water sewer truck.
Wouldn't it come from all three?
That's what its main use would be for, but yes, it would probably be split across all three. Now, what, I don't know where the funds we have from the insurance claim was, was put. I'm assuming the general fund, I would imagine. So, and that was what that was intended for. But we didn't necessarily have a need for a pickup truck at that time, so we just basically held on to the money, full knowing that sooner or later that day would come, so. And I think it was seventy-five hundred dollars or so, if I do remember correctly.
So we have that truck, and I think we have another beer-like truck, kind of, in stores, maybe take some kind of...
The idea is there to pedal both of those, take that money as well.
How would we pedal them?
Seal bid.
If we can get it advertised.
In the meantime, I think we're gonna park them down on Illinois Avenue, I think, with a for-sale sign on it.
That's fine. There's a big lot there.
See, I was thinking ahead for once.
Were you thinking of the auction or something, Martin?
No, I just, what do you mean, as far as looking at two?
Yeah, I just...
I seen one at...
Amarin auctions coming up down there, and we, I mean, you can get them for a little bit of nothing, so.
I don't know. Don't you have the license to buy from those auctions?
No. Not at Martin.
Martin's Auction House? Really? I didn't know they still sold vehicles there. I thought they did up at the auto auction up the road.
No, no, it's an Amarin-only auction, so you're getting, you're getting an old utility truck. Uh, look it up on the website, there's just, I mean, they've got pickups, they've got utility trucks, they've got, you know...
I'll definitely take a look at that. Sorry, I didn't have it.
No, smart cars, nothing. Uh, it's Amarin, I said. Uh, yes, it's this Saturday. So I know, it's short notice, but I, I didn't know we were having an issue, so.
Okay.
They do have smart vehicles on there. They're decent vehicles, they're gonna take care of it, and they usually go for under ten. A lot of times, go for under ten, sometimes under five, so.
Okay.
Stay away, stay away from the power trucks.
You don't like forward?
No. We don't need, most, we don't need a deflator. No. Most of those trucks are on their third or fourth engine, just because they're power trucks.
That makes sense. Are you okay?
Just an option.
Fair enough.
Okay. Good point, Joyce. That was in my box. I, I read it, and I knew that he was looking into it. I didn't even think to speak about it, but that's good that we did. It's good that we did. If there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for five minutes.
I agree with Martin.
Ten. I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to exit regular session, enter into executive session for eight minutes.
Eleven.
That was what, that's how the motion was announced. Is there a second?
No.
Yes, I'll second that.
Second by Barker.
You guys ready to bring it?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Yes, no?
No, it's not.
I said, I guess, no. I asked us, we, we said it'll be quick. There, there was no action taken on, on the discussion, and there will be no action taken on the discussion in the executive session. Uh, is there any other discussion?
Uh, I have something on personnel, and I don't know if I need to go to executive session, because it's on a person that has left, and there's outstanding balance that we need to discuss. So, we need to go back into the executive session, or?
We certainly have that right.
I'll make a motion, hold it down, to go into the session, discuss, uh, personnel, and, I guess finances, I don't know. Pursuit's good. Okay. Um, for fifteen minutes. I'll second that. No more than thirteen.
All those in favor? Oppose, motion passes.
Anybody in?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion passes. Thanks for coming, guys. No, I heard, your dad told you, you're not your dad. Kevin told me that he thought you were gonna go there.